Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Danville City Commission meeting for this evening, Monday, July the 12th, hours 5:30. Call us to order after we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner Kevin Cottle. Well, excuse me. Sorry. We're gonna do this first. Commissioner Atkins, your turn's coming.
I've been called Kevin Cottle before, so it's not a bad thing to be called. In honor of the things that are going on in our state, our country, and in the world today, I'd just like to, in place of a prayer, just ask, because I ought to do a moment of silence and focus on the word peace as we take that moment of silence, please.
Now, Mr. Cottle, if you will lead us in the flag of the United States of America. In the due republic, with the sand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Since I've not heard anything, to the contrary, I will assume that this agenda meets your approval and move right on into here the public. This is the opportunity for the public to address the commission for three minutes on any item that is on the agenda. There'll be a similar opportunity later on for any item that is not on tonight's agenda. So, do we have any takers for here the public? Madam Clerk? Okay, move right on. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, and that meeting was June the 28th. And Chair will entertain a motion at your convenience.
Allow for motion to approve the June 28, 2021 Regular City Commission Meeting Minutes as presented.
Thanks to Mr. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Terry, thank you very much. There was a question that I had. It's not a big deal. It had to do with the fine folks from Argyle asking us to take a vote on that, and that's what led Commissioner Atkins to make the motion. I don't know if that's germane to the conversation and don't know if you want to fool with it or not. Want to leave it alone? We'll leave it alone.
I was okay when I read it.
Okay, good deal. If there's no other questions or comments, all in favor of the motion, say aye. I oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Item two, codes report. This is Lester. Good morning. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All my sheep.
Whatever.
Jeez, whatever.
He said he didn't want to owe us, didn't he?
You have before you the monthly report for June. We issued 46 business licenses during June, replaced 29 liens. We had a total of 156 inspections and violations. We had three staff that attended the ACE Summit with the Kentucky League of Cities, which was one day of alcohol beverage control, codes enforcement, and economic development. So, that was very helpful. We issued 39 parking citations. On your condemned properties on the back, we have also added 213 North Second Street. That's not on your current list. That was added after this was put into the packets. The Architectural Heritage Board, thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for appointing Pat Boatwright to our board, and she has been trained and already had a meeting. And Joni has been working on the Heritage Council survey forms for the 2020 Certified Local Government Grant, and she has completed four COAs, consulted with three business owners, and had four site We have applied for the Entertainment Destination Center license for the city of Danville. We met with ABC Enforcement, me and the city manager, met with ABC Enforcement this afternoon for questions on that application, so it's in process. I was also able to attend the Kentucky League of Cities Board of Directors meeting to work on next year's legislative agenda, which the mayor also sits on that board as well. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Bridget?
Not a question. I just want to compliment you on your representations of the city of Danville at that conference. You served on the panel and answered some questions very intelligently and took care of business, representing the city very well. So, you should commend it.
Thank you.
Bridget, if it's not too much trouble, would you mind just developing a quick, one-page memo on what all was shared and learned at that and share it with the commission so we all have the benefit?
At the ACE Summit? All three days? Oh, I thought you all attended.
I was not able. My mom's the only one out.
I did one day.
I have the videos and stuff. If you want to review any of those, there was a lot of panels and conversations, Mayor, so it might not be as helpful to just try to summarize it as it would, but I'll be happy to share those days with you if you want to watch those.
I think it's also available through KLC to watch.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. Item three is the second reading of ordinance number 1971. This is about the comp plan and classification plan for fiscal year 2021-22. I'm gonna ask Ashley to read that ordinance, and then Chair will entertain a motion for the second reading.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 1971 and ordinance amending CDO 2-96 pertaining to the Classification Plan, Compensation Plan, and Policies and Procedures for City Personnel.
I move for approval of the second reading of ordinance 1971.
Mr. Cottle, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry beats Commissioner Atkins by a nose. Any discussion, comments, questions?
We ought to all be excited about it. It represents a...
I will tell you that I had, I was in the grocery store and had two firefighters come up to me and thanked me.
I have had some firefighters and Public Works to thank us as well.
Morale is important.
And thank you to Randy, I don't think he's here, Randy Boyd, for his hard work again.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Item four is the first reading of ordinance number 1972. This is a zone change for 202 East Walnut Street, and I'll ask city clerk to read that as well.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 1972 and ordinance changing the zone from RM2 to Family Residential to CB Central Business for approximately 0.270 acres, more or less of real property located at 202 East Walnut Street in the city of Danville, Kentucky.
All for a motion to approve ordinance number 1972, second reading.
First reading.
First reading. And I also want to call to the attention of the public that this is what we have been calling the Willis Russell House on East Walnut Street.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, seconded by Commissioner Holland. Thank you. Discussion?
I'm still just excited about the project. Save that structure.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Moving right on into item five, the city manager report. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you. I would like to just point out that we've shored up August the 31st, Tuesday morning, 9:00 a.m. We'll meet from 9:00 a.m. to about 2:00. We'll have a series of speakers to talk about economic development. We're calling an Economic Development Symposium because it's not an interactive thing. You will have an opportunity to comment and get feedback, but really, it's a presentation. We'll invite the county, invite the EDP, invite the Industrial Foundation, invite the groups in town that participate with the city, and it's a learning session. And so, it's not a two-way commission meeting to be a symposium and where we all listen together. I'm not speaking. I won't be, I'll be there, but I won't have a lot to add. I'll be learning with you all. So, again, it's August 31st at 9:00 a.m. We'll get an invitation out this week with a list of speakers, and it will be at the UK Extension Office.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. City Manager, just FYI to the commission and to the community, I may be absent from that entire meeting. I have a travel event that's been tentatively rescheduled, so I may end up missing that meeting. But what request, well, I'll have to request, is gonna be videotaped, right?
Yeah, we should anticipate it being videotaped or possibly even live fed.
But that's the EDA workshop, right?
Yep. No, no, no. That's not the EDA workshop. That's the Economic Development Symposium. It's kind of like a conference.
Anything else, sir?
Not today.
Then we will move right on into the section I mentioned at the first of the meeting. This is here the public. For any item that is not on tonight's agenda that is weighing on your hearts or minds.
You scared them off, you said that.
I guess so.
Ask Ashley if she got anything.
Somebody emailed me a message, and I'm trying to find out if it is something they wanted me to bring up, and I'm trying to find it.
Ask Ashley if she has it.
No, forget it. Never mind.
Ask Ashley if she has it.
Ask what?
Ashley if she has it.
Okay, commission comments?
You seen them? Okay. I want to get that to the record that we gave a chance to hear the public who's not in attendance tonight's meeting, but she says she doesn't have anything.
Commissioner comments? I'll start.
All right.
I want to thank our fire department and DPD for the fireworks. As we heard, I want to remind the public that this was the last year that our own fire department will be putting on the fireworks display. From here on out, we're gonna be contracting with people who do this professionally. Our firefighters do this once a year, but they do not train for it all year long as they do all their other activities. So, to put them in harm's way for one event, one time a year, is not very good use of their time and talent, nor the taxpayers' money. And so, I think it's a wise move to contract with some professionals. And I just want to thank them for those many years of doing that very, very dangerous job for the public's pleasure.
I had a few phone calls in the last few weeks about our budgets being up to date online. I just wanted to ask you about that, Mr. Coffey. I think that's important that we get those up to date for the sake of transparency.
They'll be up.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to talk about the 17th of July. It will be the first anniversary of the death of Congressman John Lewis, longtime civil rights activist. And so, the nation is from the 17th of July to the 28th of August doing what we're doing, conducting Good Trouble, Enough is Enough, Martin and Walker, in support of the Voter Rights Act for All Americans. And so, this event from the 17th of July to the 28th of August comes to the highlight of the event, which is the 28th of August in Washington, DC, and it's asking all of the citizens to walk in their local communities, but to march and walk in support of the Voter Rights Act, really the John Lewis Voting Rights Act. And so, I want to be sure to call our attention to that and ask our local papers and radio stations to, if they could, provide some PR service, some coverage of the events that are gonna take place throughout the summer about the Voting Rights Act for All Americans.
And I want to thank Commissioner Terry for bringing to my attention something that would be remiss. We didn't bring up a true public servant that left us all too early, and that is Senator Tom Buford. To say that we all got to know Tom really well while he represented this district would be an understatement. He was a true public servant. He was always accessible. He would listen to anything, no matter how small, and he would take it as seriously as if it were a big item. The good Lord took a man at age 72 far too early, and my understanding is, and I think it's kind of credit to the personality that he is, my understanding is that Tom knew he was sick, but he chose not to share that with anybody. He just didn't want to draw that kind of attention to himself. And I think that that action or inaction speaks volumes there. We will miss him. We wish his family nothing but the best in the coming days and wish our state legislators the best, because they're gonna miss him.
Yeah. The second thing I was gonna call to our attention is that we had a longtime Parks and Rec employee. He retired 30th of June, Mr. Hurrell. I know he's out on vacation right now, but it'd be nice for us to find some way to bring him to City Hall and do some type of recognition in his honor.
We offered that. To be honest, he wasn't really excited about getting out in public, and so, I'm not sure we'll be able to drag him up here. But we all respect, have a lot of respect for him, so we'll just leave that up to him if that's all right with you all.
Yeah, a group of walkers. We got him out in the park on the 30th and made him stop his riding horse and say, hey, take a break. We know it's your last day. We want to make sure you end on a good note. Come walk a step with you, but I understand what you're saying. Great man, good man.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been approached quite a bit about what we can do as a community to memorialize and remember our 78 citizens who have passed from COVID. So, in the coming weeks, if you guys, you know, also think it'd be appropriate, meaningful, or necessary, perhaps share your thoughts with the city manager, and we can see if there's something creative we want to work on, or what other communities do, or with our friends at the fiscal court. And second, I saw Ben Grant at Melton's today, and he said after 16 long months, the Danvole County Senior Center is getting ready to open in person very soon. And of course, they've done a phenomenal job delivering meals, reaching out to the public during those 16 months, and have been more active than ever. But this is very exciting for our seniors. So, thanks.
And I might offer a thought along your lines. If anybody in the public has any thoughts as to how we can remember those 78?
Seventy-eight.
Share them with us. It's gonna take some little thought on this one, I think. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to item six, which is the payment of the bills. Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the bills, please.
I'll move for approval of the bills in the amount of $1,255,372.88.
Thanks, Commissioner Terry and Commissioner Cottle. Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Item seven is the first reading of ordinance number 1973. This is fiscal year 2022 Sewer Rate Adjustments. Madam Clerk, if you'll read that as well, please.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 1973 and ordinance amending CDO Section 18-80 pertaining to sanitary sewer collection, treatment, and disposal facilities and the monthly sewer service charge per seance.
Chair will entertain a motion for the first reading.
Mayor, I will offer a motion to approve the first reading for the purpose of discussion of ordinance 1973.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Terry, thank you. We are in discussion.
Let me point out, before we get started...
Explain it.
Fire away.
To be sure, Ms. Allen provided, tried to communicate a summary of the rate study at the last meeting. At the end of that, when you go through the three numbers that changed in the fiscal year we're going into by the, as a result of the impact study, was the minimum bill for city of Danville customers was going from 4.145 to 5.420. The actual, that is the number that is cited in our ordinance, but it has moved up slightly as a result of the COLA changes, which is also embedded in the ordinance. So, it's currently, and I don't, sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head. I should have had it written down, but the change, in essence, is about $1 for on your minimum bill. The unit price for sewer inside of the city is not recommended change in the fiscal year we're in, other than just the normal COLA variation, okay? Same thing for Perryville Junction City and all the others. The next rate that changed as a result of the study was under Part A related to our industrial sewer rate. The minimum bill for our industries was about $170 a month. Based on her evaluation, she recommended that being lower to the $5.42 a month, consistent with all the other minimum bills. Then, the unit price for treatment moved from 4.20 to 10.73. So, it really, for the average customer, I can't remember what the precise amount was, but it was...
Do you remember what the percentage was, Marshall? It was like a 2% or 3% increase total on the average bill for industrial customers?
Yeah. So, it amounts to a minor net increase, but it cleans up, in the same way we recommended years ago, aligning your cost of service based on the impact to cost. What, you know, the cost of the user gets the cost allocation. The minimum bill for industrial, treating it the same as all your other customers, makes it more transparent in our mind. Instead of giving the first 20,000 units or whatever it is, we just have a basic minimum bill, and then you have your basic 100 cubic feet charge. It's pretty straightforward, and so, that's the net impact in the fiscal year you're in, is those three numbers within your ordinance. Minimum bill, minimum bill for industrial, and then the unit price for industrial. So, it amounts to about a 2% increase on industrial, and then a dollar increase on your minimum bill for residential customers and commercial customers inside of the city.
So, will this, this is related and unrelated at the same time, but it seems like every time we adjust a bill, the water bill particularly upward, it makes monthly billing that much more important, so...
Yeah. Marshall, do you have a projected date? We've talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, we've discussed that internally, and we're looking to implement that in the next month, probably. But we've still gotta jump through a few hoops to get there. So, hopefully, if we can stay on schedule, it'll be sometime in the end of this month, maybe. We'll see if we can get there.
And I would remind everyone that this is why we hire independent engineering firms that specializes in these types of rate studies. You know, we, these are not arbitrary numbers. These are numbers that are rooted in looking at our cost and looking at what other communities are charging, so we want to be in line as best we can.
And as we move toward the monthly bills, we need to do an outstanding job of communicating that to our community, because, you know, folks have been asking for that, and then it's about ready to happen, and they need to know it's gonna happen. So, let's get the word out.
We will. We'll do press releases and social media output as well.
Oh, I know you will.
Is there any further comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Item eight is resolution number 2021-07-12-01. This is a change order for our next-door central fire station. Mr. Morgan?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. In your packet, you have change order number four for the central fire station project. In your packet, you have change order number four for the central fire station project. It is in the amount of $33,137.50. This is for all the lean concrete material that was needed to to prepare the the subsurface below the footer. They ran into a few voids in the bedrock that they needed to fill. This is a unit price that we included in the bid bid process. We knew these, we knew the unit price that we would be paying for this change order. And it was just a matter of material that was needed. We did a unit price for that and that's where this number comes from. And also included this in this is a a extension to the contract of 63 days. That includes all weather days so far and 42 days for the tunnel change order that was previously approved. We knew at the time, they didn't know how the schedule would have been impacted when we approved the money. Part of that change order, we were postponing that just so they could get a handle on what that would, how that would impact the schedule. And they brought that number back to us as 42 days. That puts the substantial completion date for the contract at April 11, 2022. And at the meeting last Wednesday, they indicated that they're, they said they're about four days behind schedule right now for that date, but they're going to work hard to get it back in line. So they're 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 moving along pretty good. We've seen a lot of process progress lately with the steel construction, so.
Do you want to give, so what folks will be seeing over the next few weeks is they'll be pouring, I think they're still on schedule to pour the slab tomorrow on the first floor. You'll start a week after that, you'll start seeing your masonry go up. They'll be backfilling within that week. And then so your masonry is two or three weeks. And then you'll start seeing hopefully second floor work begin. And so they're they're having progress. The foundation was slow because it was very tight space and they couldn't have massive crews down in there. You ended up having three, four guys doing form work. And it was very detailed. So it was, they've done well considering the rain too.
We should have a mockup of the exterior here in the next week or two, which is, you know, example of the brick and and materials, that'd be window materials and those kind of things. So we'll be able to see that here in the next couple of weeks.
Just just curious, when you say an unknown cistern, is that a manmade cistern or just a area in the rock?
That was a manmade cistern.
It was.
That was discovered, yes.
All right, anything else? Roll call, Madam Clerk? Well, we don't have roll call on that. We just need a simple vote. So chair will entertain a motion for resolution 2021-0712-01.
So moved.
Commissioner Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Holland, thank you. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose a like sign. Motion carries. Item nine is a discussion with respect to our cemetery rules and regulations. Go ahead, Mr. Morgan, and don't make it a dead subject either, okay? Sorry, I had to do that, had to do that.
No, you didn't.
So.
Keep it lively then. How's that?
The particular subject tonight is about dogs in the cemeteries. We've had a lot of complaints lately about dogs being off of leashes and dogs using the bathroom in the cemeteries. This is, this rule is not real clear to us. There's a there's an ordinance that's very clear that dogs are not allowed in our cemeteries. But our rules and regulations previously approved say pets can be in there on a leash. So we we just come forward to you all tonight for just, just to kind of start the discussion of how we want to move forward with this, whether we want to change the ordinance to reflect what the rules and regulations say, or if we want to change the rules and regulations to match the ordinance. We've had, we've had some passionate complaints about this and they're understandable. I mean, some of that that could be occurring is kind of beyond the pale. But we we also know that there's people that have dogs in the cemeteries that do take care of it and and don't do these things and treat it respectfully. So we just wanted to bring it to you all and see if you all had any discussions with the community about it and and what your all's thoughts were, how to kind of remedy this. And then beyond that, once we make a decision, if the decision is to start enforcing it to remove dogs, that's that's an enforcement issue as well that we need kind of, we'll have to work out as staff, how we're going to handle that bridge. And I've already talked about it a little bit and I've talked to staff at the cemetery. That'll that'll be the next step if once we, if we move forward with that direction. So I didn't, I didn't really have anything, any discussion. I mean, if it's, if you all want us to prepare a change to the ordinance or a change to the rules and regulations, there's other items in the rules and regulations that I need to work with the cemetery committee on, just to update them. But that's, this is kind of the the pressing issue that we've, we've got a lot of phone calls about.
So I'm assuming that there was an ordinance made sometime in the meantime since the rules and regulations were in place?
No, the ordinance predates the rules and regulations, yeah.
So the ordinance prohibits?
Prohibits all dogs. And then the the rules and regulations are consistent with what is very common with cemeteries. And so it, that has been in that a lot of cemeteries are perceived as as public space where they, some folks walk and and take take solace and and spend time. The idea of of walking your dog is not uncommon in cemeteries. But the concern that has been expressed is sometimes those dogs take advantage of the green space for bathroom breaks. And and so the question at hand is, do we, do we want to eliminate that possibility altogether? There's some concern, frankly, for military graves for that occurring on those. And and so we're carrying that to you to make sure that we're doing what you all want and not making arbitrary decisions. The ordinance and the regulations do conflict, conflict. And so what we will need to do is clean those up so that 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 doesn't conflict one way or another. And so if, you know, you can, so for me, my recommendation is that you probably adhere to the ordinance because you do have other places you can walk dogs. We do have a pet, pet or a dog park in Millennium Park and you can walk dogs down the sidewalk, that's totally fine on a leash. So we would, you know, if if you're going to side one way or another, then then we would probably have have to suggest that adhere to the ordinance and and remove the possibility of dogs in the park. Although, you know, I've got three dogs myself, right? It's not about the animal, it's more about paying respect. And it's it's an environment where we try to foster little, we try to prevent conflict because there's people that go to the cemetery for to memorialize things. And so we we want to pay respect to that and that's our recommendation. But we defer to your all's judgment.
The first thing that I think of, and I understand people get, you know, they're emotional about the cemetery and I understand that, I get that. The thing that I think about though is is we currently have an ordinance that requires dogs to be on leash and control their owners. And we have an ordinance that requires owners to pick up the dog exhaust when they do their thing. So we're trying to, people who aren't going to follow that now, are they going to necessarily adhere to that later? We're trying to legislate good behavior or something, you know? I I don't know. I don't have the answer. It just seems to me like we're getting, get in a kind of a quandary of how in the world would we enforce it?
Yeah, I think that's how you end up with conflicting documents, is is trying to go through that mental exercise. Both sides make sense. Josh is right. And so it's it's purely a judgment call. We just need to be able to give staff good direction and.
Well, I didn't give you any, so I just, you know, I cleared my mind, but I feel better.
No, it's totally reasonable.
But let me follow up on Kevin. I was always told, don't make a rule you can't enforce.
Correct, right.
And 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 so, you know, based on that, I don't, I think you've got to go one way or the other. And and if you've got got an ordinance that prohibits dogs, and I'll just go ahead and stand my ground, I do think that dogs are going to naturally use any area you take them to for their their natural, their natural habits. It just so happens that doing it in a in a place of of, what's the word I'm looking for? But in a special place, I'll leave it like that, it's just not appropriate. And and again, as you say, we've got, we've got a dog park. And I don't know how you enforce people who won't clean it up. So to me, it's it's just got to be one way or the other. And that's not a very popular stance, but I don't know of any other way. I'd like to hear from Chief Gray or Bridget on on this, if you've got any comments.
I would, sorry, go ahead.
Our dilemma has just been which way to go. I mean, the ordinance says one thing, I've been told different things. So I don't know what to send my staff out to do during the day. Of course, after hours, it would be up to the police chief. But, you know, we need to know what you want us to do and how to use the fines and penalties for what you put in the ordinances there, so. But we do get the calls and we get, you know, the very, people crying and in tears because they, things have happened and they don't understand why.
It is, it is complicated at times, like Bridget said, it's 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 an emotional issue. A lot of times, there's, not to be funny or anything, but there's not a lot of evidence for us to follow up with. It's somebody's word versus, you know, they're giving us one side of the story. It's it's just a hard spot. I see both sides of the issue. You're trying to, again, like you said, legislate our behavior.
I would think, like Commissioner Cottle said, it's a public space. So the public laws would apply and they are supposed to be on a leash. It seems to me it's easier to catch someone in the act of not having a dog on a leash than when the dog has used the bathroom. Does this apply to all of our cemeteries or are we speaking of Bellevue specifically? Or would this apply to all?
We, it would need to apply to all.
It applies to all.
Yeah.
Josh, has this been taken to the cemetery committee?
I spoke to them about it the last meeting. They didn't, I don't think that was, they were able to vote on it. But they, the the general consensus among them was that we need to prohibit dogs. I think, you know, the the enforcement, I try to sometimes think about, we are still a small town. And I think 90% of the people we're talking about are the same people walking their dogs every day that live nearby. And our our staff up there could probably recognize every one of them at the grocery store if they saw them later. So I think enforcement wise, I mean, we tried to start off just by having a conversation with those people. And I think that's been hard for us up till now because we just didn't know what the rule, how 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 hard we need to enforce that rule. But I think if we get guidance, okay, we're going to restrict dogs because this is happening. I think then we can kind of start having conversations with these people of, hey, this is, this is what we decide, you know, this is what the ordinance says, we talked to the commission about it, we got to do something about it. Because it's one of those things where, you know, 99% of the time, they could do exactly what they're supposed to do with the dogs and keep them on a leash and not let them go to the bathroom and keep them next to the road. It just takes that one time of that not happening and it's it's a disaster. So I think, you know, if we're talking about enforcement, I, you know, our staff up there, they've got, they've got a lot of other things to do. But I think we would start, we talked about it the other day in management team, that if we decide to do this, it's going to be a couple of months of like us having to kind of stay after people because it's the same people, talking to them, say, hey, this is, you know, this is what they said, this is what we need to do. And I think if we kind of get the message across to them, the enforcement will go down a lot. We might have a random one every now and then, but it won't be, it won't be daily. So I, you know, we're prepared to do whatever you all ask us to do as far as to make this work and to make the cemeteries be a peaceful place for everyone, so.
And it, and Bridget and Josh both, and I'm sure Tony's heard the same thing, this is an emotional issue for the veterans, to be clear. It it's not, it's it's, it is an emotional issue for them. And and so I would not be doing my job if I didn't communicate that effectively.
So with that said, can I offer a, that we push this, we consider it until the next meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, yeah. When I, when I read this over the weekend, I really do agree that it's an emotional issue. But for one who spends time in a cemetery, both cemeteries, I just find it hard for me to say that I don't want people in this community to walk their dogs in the cemetery. And at the same time, I want them to have the right to walk their dogs there, but I want them to abide by the lease law and about the pickup law. And if you go to Millennium Park, the folks who use the dog park also use the two mile trail around the park. And I know some of those same people go to Bellevue. I just find it hard that we have to deal with that at the commission level that, for to close the park down to folks walking their dogs, I really don't oppose, I'm opposed to that because I, it's a, it's a more, be careful how you say this, it's a more mature crowd, more mature audience. And they're in and out of there before it gets dark. And I see them just like I see people in the park picking up. But I guess some people don't pick up, but.
Can we offer a compromise of possibly adding the the bag dispensers like we have at Millennium?
Yeah, I mean, we can do whatever y'all want. And we, you know, they're, we don't have a schedule either. And waiting two weeks is certainly appropriate for you to have, if you want to have some dialogue and and think about it a little bit more that, you know, we don't have a schedule for it. But doing something like that, we can do. I mean, it's, the the biggest thing is is managing the conflict between what you all have authorized in the regulations and what you have authorized in the ordinance. So depending on what your all's ultimate decision is, we'll fix one or the other.
Is there still a sign?
There is a sign.
Yes, there's a sign in Bellevue that says no dogs allowed.
Okay, and it it's already completely disregarded?
Yes, yes, it's going to take more than signage.
We've not been able to enforce it because we're in conflict with the regulations. So which one do we apply?
I I don't like to deter people from walking or or spending time in the cemetery. But at the same time, it's, if they're going to be in the cemetery and there happens to be a service, you know, most of the time people are respectful. But I know you have that one that ruins it for everybody. And that's what we're trying to prevent. And I hate to deter the the part of the public that that uses it to walk in. And I've I've done that. I haven't done that in a while, but I've been one of those walkers. But if I see that there is a service or someone visiting a loved one's grave, I try to avoid that. And if your dog's not on a leash, then that, you know, that, to me, that is the bigger offense here, is not having your dog on a leash in a public space. So.
I think the difference in my mind between, and Mr. Atkins makes a great point, but the difference is, both of them are public spaces. One of them is sacred, one of them is sacred. And and maybe even more than just sacred to individuals. I'll just leave that there.
Let's get some feedback and we'll.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it again in two weeks. Thank you.
I'm going to move on into public safety a minute because I want to recognize Chief for the professionalism of some very difficult situations, I think it was last week. Chief, just fantastic job. If we can support your men in any further way, communicate that to each of us, men and women, excuse me. Well, I was talking about those that were involved in the two incidences. So, great job. Anything else?
Not on the agenda. We do have an executive session.
Under what grounds?
61811B for the deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the public agency. And then item G, discussions between the public agency and a representative of a business entity in discussions concerning a specific proposal.
Do you hear a motion to that effect?
Moved, so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Terry. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. We are in executive session.
Here motion, we move back into regular session.
So moved.
Thanks to Mr. Terries, your second?
Second.
Mr. Cottle, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed like sign, we are in regular session. Mr. Coffey, anything that we need to share?
No, sir.
Anything further from the commission?
Just for clarification, we have meeting on Thursday morning joint?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
What's the location on that? That is the Holiday Inn, okay. At ten?
Eight thirty.
Oh. Eight thirty?
Eight thirty.
I'm probably going to be late to that.
Holiday Inn.
I have an eight thirty appointment.
Well?
Last I heard it was at ten.
It's kind of like eight thirty.
Okay. I'll see what I can do. Holiday Inn, eight thirty, okay.
Okay.
And which one is that meeting, the fiscal club? Okay, that's what I was thinking, okay. Yeah, I had ten written down too, but I can do eight thirty.
It's a discussion on the EDA.
Okay.
And then also a discussion on, right now, we're going to talk about the expansion of the courthouse and what the downtown master plan discussed for that and what we should do jointly or as partners.
I would move that we adjourn.
Well, before you do, let me ask a question.
No, I'm going to move we adjourn.
Can we even entertain the thought of shifting to ten?
What was the driver of eight thirty, wasn't it the county, I think?
I don't know, I had it just here.
Yeah. I can't remember what pushed it to that time. I think, I thought it was...
Because I've got it at ten o'clock, too.
Yeah, I do too.
How about time to be determined?
Are they still three in the week, Louis?
Yes, and so somewhere between eight thirty and ten. And...
Can we compromise and do like nine?
We have to learn all that inside.
Yeah, we'll work on that and try to nail that down.
But it definitely is the Holiday Inn.
Yes.
Okay.
They have a nice...
You could just... Somebody could just get back to us about that.
We'll confirm the time.
Tomorrow, maybe. Okay, thank you.
Now, Commissioner Cottle, please, sir.
No, I already did.
Okay, anybody want to adjourn the meeting?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, sir, thank you, ma'am. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, have a good evening.